I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Bill, I didn't realize you were still seated.
That's okay.
I want to start. I slammed on the brakes, though. Seeing no citizens to comment, not even any in the remote world, huh?
Uh, nope. Aaron just popped, or Aaron's coming in, Aaron's in.
All right.
But no, we don't have any other attendees to make that aware.
And we have no special recognitions?
No, Mr. Chair.
So we will move right on to the student representatives' report. Aaron and Jasmine?
Hey, there he is.
There he is.
Hello.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi.
There we go. Hello, guys. It's been a really hot second since I've seen you guys, but nice to see you guys again.
Nice to see you.
Uh, so, quick updates, of course. Um, Auburn High is actually going to go pretty well, even as, you know, the school year concludes, especially for seniors, as we have about two to three, uh, three, four weeks left before our final last day. However, we're happy to say that NHSS is finally getting our induction, um, even though it's super late, like usually we do it in mid-March. But we're gonna be in Philly tomorrow. It's gonna be, uh, just for precautions, it's gonna be students only. And so no parents, no, uh, no, nothing. Um, so it's gonna be like a quick, uh, quick, uh, quick, in short thing, but it's gonna be really nice for the new duckies, as well as last year's duckies, who really didn't get the in-person experience. So hopefully, we're able to provide the best service that we can this year for them. So that'll be tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And also for module one, we are holding an in-person, uh, quick conference with our current delegation, because we have a bunch of new, uh, freshman sophomores who really haven't gotten an introduction to the program, uh, in person-wise. So we're happy to actually give them a nice in-person thing. That'll be made twelve, like a couple of days, a couple of weeks from now. And it's gonna be a full in-person, uh, thing, full procedure-wise, and get them quickly initiated into module one. It's a, um, it's actually amazing, because it's like, I think there's like fifteen of them, and there's currently about fifteen of us. So just with them, it's just so many new people. And we're trying to get them in and enjoy this whole new thing. And that's really exciting for us. And hopefully Jasmine's able to connect to audio as soon as she can for everything that she has to say. But other than that, other like Auburn High-wise, I feel like school's been going pretty well, and Jasmine's expected, so I would love her to take it, if she hasn't said.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Um, so, so far on school, uh, so I apologize if I seem a little discombobulated. I just broke my kitchen sink, so I'm in a little bit of trouble right now. Um, so I mean, like the whole faucet just came off, so that's why I'm outside, you know? Um, but nonetheless, I'll carry on. So, school has been going really well, especially with having the majority of our student body back. Um, I think that students are definitely enjoying, um, being able to eat lunch outside, which I know that I definitely am. And, you know, despite everything that's going on, it's nice that there is something that we can all smile about every day, um, you know, according to weather. So I really enjoy that. And other than that, everything else has pretty much remained the same. You know, I see a lot of students still, most students still following guidelines, which is really good to see and assuring, reassuring. Um, and yeah, I guess student life has been calm, but it's good. I know spring sports just started, and that's also had everyone in a good mood. And I guess we all kind of have our sights set on summer. Um, so that's it.
Excellent. Well, thank you both. Um, excellent as always, and we enjoyed, um, your little story about the sink. We don't mean to laugh at you, I know that could be traumatizing, but it's one of those things. Wait till you become a homeowner, Jasmine.
Oh, I'm sure, you know? So my mom's like trying to call the plumber right now. So, you know, it really was an honest mistake. I dropped a plant, like a hanging plant on it, so it's okay.
That will do it, yeah. That'll do it for sure. So Jasmine, one question. Um, how did you get Aaron to show up to the meeting? Did you have to bribe him?
No, I called TJ Maxx and I told him to fire him.
Why didn't we think of that?
After his college acceptance, has he quit?
Um, any questions for Aaron or Jasmine?
Oh, I'm just wondering what college Aaron chose. Has the decision been made?
I actually did come into a school finally, and I'm happy to say that we'll be attending Harvard in the fall.
Oh, congratulations. That's great. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's excellent.
Very well deserved, and worked very hard for that. That's terrific. Congratulations, Aaron.
Any other comments or questions for our student representatives?
Well, thank you. It's good to see you, uh, again, and, uh, good luck with everything at home, Jasmine.
Thank you, I'm gonna need it. I think I'll, I'll stay out here for a little while. I'll stay out here until dinner.
You might have to buy your mom a new plant.
You stay out there and flag down the plumber when he shows up. All right, thank you both. Have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.
Oh, those two are great.
Aren't they nice? They're such nice young people.
I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 3:24 and 4:14.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone, uh, who's maybe watching at home or watching later on the recorded rebroadcast. As you probably have been noticing, we, um, as, and as the kids mentioned, we've been back to school full-time since April 5, and, and we continue to see our COVID cases drop in the schools. We did have a little concern about whether or not we would see a little bit of a bump post-April vacation, um, and we're really not seeing that right now. Um, so, um, as it states here, so far, so good. And we will continue to, um, to monitor that situation and take any necessary, uh, action. But, um, we're in a good spot, we feel, with COVID, and, um, hopefully we stay that way.
Great.
Excellent. I have a question, actually.
We have a question, sure.
Um, do we know if any of the high schoolers are getting vaccinated? I know it just went to sixteen plus.
Yeah, so I can tell, and maybe Dr. Chamberlain will know a little bit more in depth, but I, I do know that, um, there are, there are several families, many of our families, with children that are sixty and over, um, in fact, are, are getting vaccinated.
Yeah, I don't have any numbers on that. We're not asking students, but I know many of them that I've, um, teachers I've spoken with have said that they have students that have been vaccinated and the like, and the nurses have shared that as well.
Okay.
We met with a family today who just got an appointment for their daughter tonight, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
And are they letting the nurse know when they get it? Or is that just confidential, and they don't need to notify them?
I think, I don't, we haven't formally asked the nurses to, for that information, but, um, yeah, it is kind of a HIPAA compliant, you know, type of situation, but, um, um, you know, we're asking, we are asking, as, as, you know, we've said in meetings prior, we are, you know, asking staff if they're willing to let us know. Um, and so they continue to do that.
Yep.
Um, and so, um, so a good majority of the faculty are, are just about, um, all the way vaccinated, so.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Mm, great.
That's good.
You're all set, right, Dr. Handfield?
Um, Sunday, actually, is my second, my second shot. So, um, yep, great timing, uh, on the heels of town meeting on Tuesday, so hopefully there won't be too many side effects, and, uh, I'll be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. But, um, I didn't have, I, I got the Pfizer, um, and, uh, I didn't have too many issues the first time. I mean, you know, just some of the common things people have talked about, but, um, we'll see. We'll see how the second one goes.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Yes, thank you for asking. Good luck with that. Uh, moving on in your packets, we had brought this to your attention, um, a few meetings ago, um, but what we have here, um, is the 2021-2022 calendar. There's a couple of small revisions that we need to make, um, just in terms of just proofreading before we send this to the community. But as you'll note here, um, there are three half-days in the schedule. Uh, that's a reduction from what was in previous, uh, school calendars. There's a half-day before November, a half-day before, uh, Christmas Eve, and then there's a half-day in May, um, the two half-days in November and December. The November day is a traditional day for Thanksgiving. We decided that we would go with a, a half-day the day before, um, the Friday of, of holiday break, because most families are on the move at that time. And then we kept the half-day in May, because that's a big time for us to do our placement discussions, especially for our kids K to eight. Um, but I'm hoping that families will, will look at this calendar and, and, you know, find it a little bit more, um, I don't want to say palatable, but a little bit easier in terms of just dealing with, having to deal with childcare and things of that nature. I, I know that that is, um, you know, something that's of a concern. We also, you know, shared that concern, but we also felt that we wanted to maximize the kids in school as much as we could, and we wanted to have, you know, premier kind of learning time, if you will, and not that the day before, you know, Thanksgiving and, and, um, Christmas Eve isn't prime time, uh, but, you know, certainly, um, we felt like it was, it was time, you know, best served to place, uh, in those areas. So, uh, February vacation and April vacation are, are present. And then, uh, as you've seen here, we've, we've populated the calendar with, um, holidays, um, to, uh, recognize, um, everyone within our school community who may be celebrating, um, of different faiths, so that there's an awareness in our community, um, you know, around, you know, what days, um, those are. So, um, we will review that one more time, um, check dates to make sure that the days and, and things like that match up, but, um, we need a motion to, to do that and then send it forward.
I would entertain that motion.
Can you make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar distribution in the school community?
Can I second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. June 19th now is a state holiday?
Yes. Yep, so June.
It's a legal holiday.
Yeah, so Juneteenth is celebrated on June 19th, and it's the emancipation of slaves. Um, if it falls on a weekend, it goes to the next.
Or next Monday?
That's what, yes, that's why it's, um, it's shaded here in red, um, for a June 20th.
But the other days, it stays if it's on a Wednesday or something?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, correct. Yeah, and, and this year, I mean, it, it, it won't matter this year. Not, I'm not saying the date won't matter, I'm saying that it has no impact on our school calendar this year, is what I mean. Um, this is in effect for next school year.
Any other comments or questions?
It seems that PD days are, they straddle holidays too, so that is good. Families can make a long weekend out of most of them.
We tried to, we tried to, um, we did. I mean, I, you know, I mean, we, we really did try, um, you know, to review the calendar and try to maximize both family time and the PD time, um, you know, for our staff, but also be cognizant of the fact that, you know, do we really need the half-days? And when they were put in for, you know, a number of years ago, there was good reasons at that time. But like anything, right, it's always, you know, things are always up for review. So, um, you know, we're, we're happy with this. I think, like I said, the community will be happy with it. I think it's a step in the right direction on a few fronts, and, um, and we'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. But, um, but yeah, so we'll see.
Agreed.
So through the chair, May 19th, is it a half-day for students and staff? Or is it just students? I mean, just students?
May 9th.
I'm sorry, yeah, May 9th.
So, right, so May 9th would be a half-day. It, well, it says for students and staff, but it would be a half-day for, um, just students.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's a PD day? Half-day?
Yeah, a half-day for the students.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just moving on, um, as I just mentioned, uh, previous, we have a town meeting next, uh, next Tuesday, May 4th. But, um, last Wednesday, or excuse me, two Wednesdays ago, April 14th, we held our public, uh, hearing, uh, for the school budget for FY22. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone who was in attendance, and, and especially for those folks who have, uh, reviewed the videotape and, um, and sent questions. Um, they've been really pointed questions, um, and I appreciated receiving them and having the opportunity to answer. Um, we'll be seeking our final budget approval, uh, for our FY22 budget. Request of $27,988,545 at town meeting on May 4th. Presentations and documents are available on our website, as they have been, um, for the last several months, as well as, uh, on April, on Auburn Cable Television. If people see the replays of the Finance Committee, um, I also did a, um, another recording last evening of the school budget, um, geared towards town meeting. And, um, it is positioned on the town's website with Town Manager Jacobson's presentation, which she also audiotaped, uh, videotaped, excuse me, uh, so that town meeting members will have an opportunity to view those prior to coming to the meeting on Tuesday, the 4th. And, um, you know, one of the, I think, one of the positive, right? Because we're starting to talk about positive, um, unintended consequences of COVID. Town Manager Jacobson and I were, were saying that, uh, moving forward, we're gonna videotape these presentations forevermore, because it saves an hour and a half-plus on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
That we can provide this information, people can watch it at their leisure, they can re-watch it if they miss something, they can ask questions, you know? Um, as I, as I alluded to earlier, I've received a few really great questions from town meeting members already, and it just speeds up that process, you know? And so, um, we're hopeful that, that, you know, that, that change this year and then moving forward, um, maybe people won't, um, be as concerned about the length of time of the meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, because it won't be as long. I mean, they, they can go for a while. No question.
They sure can.
They can go for a while, so. But, that being said, um, we're, you know, I, I know, I'm excited for May 4th, and, um, you know, hopefully we'll have a budget at the conclusion of the evening for fiscal year '22.
Fingers crossed. Any comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Moving on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So historically, and you know this, uh, being the school committee, you've met prior to town meeting at Auburn High School for the purposes of discussing any last-minute changes to Warren Articles of School Board, or the school budget request. With town meeting taking place next week, I'm not sure, um, that there's, that there would be a need to, to meet. The Warren Articles, um, and budget, um, have been provided to you, um, and they've been reviewed and vetted by town, um, and everyone is in support on the town side. I just merely had the question, did you want to have a meeting or post for a meeting? Um, if, uh, just because it's something that you've always done? Or? No? Okay. Okay. That's, and that's fine. All right, I'll just write big N-O with an underline. No. Okay.
Our hat's on.
Did you want that in the form of a motion?
Actually, yes. Maybe I'm, I'll, I'll retract my N-O until you make the motion.
Yeah, well, I just want to make it official. You never know. I don't know what Meg's thinking down there, so. Are we okay with not holding?
Well, no.
I knew it. I knew it. Well, I would entertain a motion to, um, for, uh, that, um, before town meeting, school committee meeting.
I'll make that motion to not meet before this town meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I wouldn't meet if it was like at Yongsheng or something.
Okay. No, nothing like being honest. Sorry I asked if there are any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you, um, everyone. And just as a, like I said, as an aside, you have, you have town meeting, um, you have a copy of, of all the budgets, ours is included in there. You also have a, a copy of our, the Warren Articles, you've seen these prior, uh, to this evening.
Yep.
So that you'll have those for your, your, um, your review. And similar to the October, uh, special fall town meeting, um, the, the landscape, it's gonna, the, the meeting's gonna run exactly the same, so the school committee would be housed in the presentation room of the high school, and then there'll be either a video drop or, or an audio, um, you know, of, of the meeting into the room. So.
Yeah. That was a real snatch last time.
Yeah. Just wanted you to be aware. I didn't want anyone to show up and, uh, not know where they were going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Yes, moving on to, um, it's, it's nice to actually start entertaining some things that are not necessarily COVID-related. Before you, Mr. Chair, is, um, because this is an out-of-state field trip request. Um, included in your packet this evening is a request from Mr. Michael Young, AHS Ski Club advisor, to take members of the ski club to J-Peak Ski Resort in Vermont over the weekend of March 11th to the 13th in, uh, 2022. This is a trip, as you're aware, has taken place in prior years, um, has been very successful. Unfortunately, it had to be canceled at the last minute in 2020 due to the pandemic, um, with J-Peak refunding payments in full, provided that things are safe and, um, it's safe for our students to, to go to J-Peak. It's my recommendation that you approve this. And like I said, if there's an issue and, and does any hint of safety might be compromised, we would re, we would re, um, remove the permission to go.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn High School ski club trip to J-Peak in Vermont in March 2022.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any comments, questions?
That's a great opportunity for kids to ski somewhere besides the Locavilles.
It is. And, and J-Peak, and, you know, obviously, I've, I've reviewed this trip a number of times, you know, at the building principal level, and, uh, J-Peak really just does a fantastic job, um, for our high school students, you know, or for school groups in general, but, you know, I've seen a lot of school groups, you know, in, in school trips and, and companies, um, and they're, they're one of the best that we've ever dealt with. And especially last year with, with the pandemic, um, you know, not every, not every, um, you know, ski, ski hill or, you know, other, um, you know, tourist destination, you know, was refunding money.
No, they weren't.
So, um, you know, it's a compliment to them and, um, you know, the integrity that they have, so. So, yeah, so the kids will be excited, I'm sure Ms. Teung will be excited, and, you know, hopefully by March of 2022, we're, we're in a good spot.
I hope so. It's just, even just, um.
Yeah.
No, even just reviewing the, um, the field trip forms, it's, it just brings back kind of a sense of normalcy and excitement and.
Agreed.
And the ability for kids to enjoy some of the things that they've missed out on this past year. So, kind of a good feeling that we're, we're gonna be approving this.
Yeah.
Well, without getting ahead of myself.
It is nice, because I think this was one that we had to cancel, that I still remember I have to look a kid in the eye and tell them, so it's nice that they'll hopefully not have it.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you, and then you'll, Mr. Chair, you'll just, you'll sign the.
Sure.
Before the evening ends, thank you. Otherwise, Mrs. Otten will be coming after, coming after me and coming after you. So thank you. Um, moving for, uh, moving on, um, in your packets, just a, a NIESC update from Auburn High School. Um, many of you, um, will recall the 2018 visit, uh, for our accreditation. Now, Mr. DeLongchamp, obviously, is the principal there. Part of the accreditation process is that you submit, um, two, five, and seven-year accreditation reports, uh, to the committee, and the reports that you're sending to the committee are, um, your responses to their recommendations from the, from their visit. If you recall, in, in 2018, um, the high school had a, an outstanding review, uh, from the visiting committee. And so what's detailed in this letter, I will not go through all of it and read it. But what's detailed in this letter is, is an affirmation of things that have continued to move forward at Auburn High School, and, um, uh, with a list of commendations, and then, um, a request from the committee for the high school to just continue to update, um, the commission, uh, on, on certain pieces. One, one big one being the creation of a, of a, of a portrait of a graduate. Um, what is it that we're looking for? You know, what, what makes an Auburn High School graduate a graduate? And so, um, that's kind of the pinnacle, uh, of, of, of the work that, that they're working on at the high school. So they include this just as a, as a point of reference. Um, again, I, I won't go through it all, it's, you know, it's a four-page letter, um, but it's, it's all, it's all positive, so.
Great.
The good work continues there by all.
Any comments, questions?
No, looking through it, it was very positive. I didn't really see any big suggestions or anything.
No. No. No, it's, you know, this is, it, it, the accreditation process really is a, is a powerful process. Um, if, if you go into it with the right mindset, it's about, it's peer-to-peer, you know, and, and it's, and it's, you know, collegial, you know, improvement. And, um, and, and so, um, you know, I applaud the high school and the staff especially. I mean, it's a huge lift, um, every ten years, and then the maintenance. Um, but, then, like I said, the good work is continuing there, so, um, like I said, share that with you just as a point of reference.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as another point of reference, um, April the 11th to the 13th, I had the good fortune to participate in the National Superintendent's Forum. Um, I was invited to attend with colleagues from across all fifty states, uh, in the country to discuss, as, as I listed here, critical issues facing our schools, including strategic plans for districts and school improvement coming out of a pandemic, um, social-emotional concerns for faculty, staff, and students, issues surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion within schools, and then I was also able to participate, um, among, um, some other virtual workshops. I also hosted a workshop on creativity, uh, which was kind of cool. And, um, you know, albeit it was virtual via Zoom, it was inspiring and lightning and really thought-provoking, and, uh, and it was informative. And, um, you know, one of the things that, I think one of the most powerful things that, that I took away from it, um, in speaking with people from, you know, the West Coast to the Midwest to, you know, down south, the issues that we're talking about in Auburn are the same exact issues being talked about, you know, across the entire country.
Really?
You know, what are, what are you gonna do with, with, you know, student, you know, learning as it relates to, you know, accelerating students to get them up to speed if, if they're not where they are? Um, how are you going to address the social-emotional needs of your, of your faculty and, and staff and students, um, when you kind of think you know what they are, but you kind of don't really know what they are until we get back really in the full swing? You know, how do you move a school district forward coming out of a pandemic? And, um, there's no book for any of this. And so it was just really, really interesting to, to just kind of sit and, and have conversation with, with colleagues, you know, across the country. And the takeaway was, you know, everyone is, is doing the best they can, but the issues are the same, you know, in, in all different parts of the country. You know, in, in places, some are more magnified than others, but, um, there was a lot of common ground in, in conversation, so, um, you know, I was able to, to get a lot of really good insight and ideas, um, from, from folks that I, I was with, and, um, I, I hope that they found that to be the case as well, so, um, it was, it was worth the, the three days and the, the multiple Zoom meetings. So it was, it started on a Sunday and then ended on a Tuesday, so, um, so it was great. It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, it is.
Great opportunity.
Excellent.
Uh, and then, uh, lastly, before I turn it over to Dr. Chamberlain, um, and Jasmine had mentioned it in her comments at the outset, um, spring season started, uh, Monday, and, um, if you haven't been by the high school yet, take a drive-by at 2:30, 3 o'clock. It really does feel like it's normal, you know? It really does feel like it's normal. Um, the spring sports season is, is scheduled to play out in a full season, which is the first full season that we've had, um, uh, in the athletics, um, you know, all year. You know, fall was truncated, uh, winter was definitely truncated here in Auburn. Um, and then we, you know, we just finished our Fall Two season, um, which was modified, but that was very successful as well, so, um, we're excited to see the kids back on the fields, and, and we look forward to, um, to stopping by some of their games and see how they do, so. Things are getting back to normal.
That's great.[1666.51] Hopefully we can keep them out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
No.
All right, we'll move right on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Handfield, if you can pull that up. So while we're pulling something up here, it seems like this is the theme of the evening, right, is, doesn't it feel like we're starting to, there are hints of normal? And so Dr. Handfield and I, you know, while we continue to focus on health and safety, right, that's going to be paramount, we thought tonight it might be a good time to just take a little look at a few snapshots of some normal when we think about what's happening in our schools. And I just want to take a moment to say that really what our teachers and staff have done is nothing short of remarkable through all of this. And when you see some of these things, they're things we've seen many times before in pictures and videos and the like, but we thought it was important now to take a look at that, really because of all the hard work everyone has done and because it might just make you feel good.
So you know what I'll do? I'll just, how about if I just click forward for you?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, go ahead. Yep. So we'll start in preschool, where they've been very busy. And we have a little friend doing an experiment with Skittles and a little bit of water, or sometimes they use milk, and they talk about what the chemistry is and why does that happen? And the kids, quite frankly, think it's a bit magical. So that was a very exciting day.
Do they get to eat them too?
They always sneak a few, for sure. There's no doubt, no doubt.
But now the cat's out of the bag, because now the parents know.
That's right.
We tell them there's no sugar involved.
Yeah. So again, in preschool, right, we know that play is an integral piece of kids growing up. So there was a lot of concern, if you think back, right, were kids going to be able to be with their friends? But even now, here they are, looks a little bit different than what it might have looked like, you know, a couple of years ago, but they're still playing and they're still talking and they're still being kids. So it really is, and that's, you know, these are just a smattering of things. So there are a lot more things happening, but anyway, it's just great to see. And one more little snapshot of a little darling digging her hands in in preschool to some homemade snow. So again, offering, you know, we wondered about how many things could we give kids to touch and play with and to manipulate, right? But it can happen in a safe way, and you'll see she has her little individual tray, as everyone did, but it was another great day in preschool for our youngest students. And this is something I'm sure you've heard about or seen many times before, is the release of butterflies, right? And it's still happening, looks a little different, but this is first grade at Bryn Mar School, and they're letting their butterflies go that have hatched in their classroom. So another, that's always a big day in first grade when the butterflies go.
Yeah, my son's class has them right now and he's so excited.
Yeah, they can't wait, they can't wait. Exploration of seeds, right, and germination, and how things grow, and the difference between living and non-living things. I mean, look at the look in her eyes, right? Is she enjoying what she's doing? She certainly is. So just some exciting times, and she's got her little tweezers in her hands. This is at Packard Hogg School, they too are working on growing. It's a little hard to see, but on the cups, they have pictures of themselves, you know, they make those sprout heads so the grass grows out of their heads, so they all have their little cups making their sprout heads, which is always fun, and they can give them little haircuts. Again, at Packard Hogg, here they had to answer the question, why do birds have beaks? And part of that investigation was exploring the types of materials that might make a good beak and how you can work around rocks and things to get to your food. So you'll see there's little blocks as the rocks and some little noodles that they're trying to get, and they have different tools to look at how that beak might work for the And we had to show you that certainly the tents are being used very frequently. In this case, it's a music class, so they're able to spread out appropriately and they all have their seat to enjoy some music with Mrs. Garrow. And the next one shows them also doing some art activities out underneath the tents. They have tables and all the materials they need to do that. So I assure you that those tents are being very well-used. If we move on to Swanson Road, we have our youngest engineers building roller coasters for marbles to see how, if they can get their marble to go the farthest. They were very proud of themselves, and you'll see in the next photograph how proud they are as they are future engineers, so really good stuff. And these are all things, you know, they happened before, right? And they continue to happen despite some of the parameters that have been put on us, so it's great to see. These students are studying the Midwest, and they had to make storyboards on some famous people. And I just thought they were so cute to share with their classmates and with their parents. And the next one is just, I had to keep it in there because he had the little space suit and everything for Neil Armstrong, so, you know, again, a typical project. And something we've always done is to have mystery readers visit classrooms. So many classrooms were still allowed to have their parents come in as the mystery reader as a surprise for them, read a story. Again, this isn't what it looked like a couple of years ago, but everyone was just as happy to be there and to have their parents there. Moving on to the middle school, the middle school art club created these stained glass paintings this last week, and it was rendering of, in quotes, "What Got Me Through 2020" by the kids. So some really meaningful work, another way to address some of the social-emotional issues that our children have faced throughout this ordeal. And they were all beautifully displayed in the foyer of Auburn Middle School. As we try to continue to be outside, some seventh-grade science classes took advantage of the spring weather and went on a hunt for snakes and salamanders. They were studying deciduous forests and pond biomes, and Mother Nature did not disappoint. So they found a salamander and then they found another little friend. A nice little snake, so the kids were absolutely thrilled to find those critters.
And they did sanitize their hands, don't worry.
And there was a much bigger snake than that at one point.
Yes.
Did you see that?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know how they were able to pick it up, or how Mr. Berg was able to, you know, guide them through that. It was a, it was a good-sized snake. It would have had mania.
Well, Mr. Dusty worried you might be afraid of that one, he didn't know if I should show you, so. Eighth grade continue to honor Dr. Robert Goddard by, you know, creating their rockets and launching and comparing angle to average velocity, both inside and outside. So you'll see, we're taking full advantage of all the wonderful spaces our school buildings afford to us. And if we move on to Auburn High School, again, lots of typical activities. You know, these are kids in Mr. Wright's shop, still at it, right, working away. We have outdoor classes taking place regularly. You'll see we have whiteboards set up, just like a regular classroom. On the beautiful days, as Jasmine intimated, they love to be outside, so that's great. Even though traditional classrooms continue to thrive, right? Everything has a little bit of spacing, but the kids are still there in computer labs and next in their math classroom. But most importantly, in the next one, you'll see, if you know, if you remember DJ Ray, one of our Evolve students, who was spinning tunes last year in the cafeteria, she's now spinning tunes outside as many of our students are sitting outside to have lunch, so that continues as well. And finally, one of the real triumphs of high school is we're having band practice. If you can see, they have to be very, very, very spread out, but they are out on the sidewalk having band practice, and Mr. DeLongchamp told me at his window open and he loved hearing it, so they were right outside there, so another great sign. And finally, to talk a little bit about Evolve and Encore, we heard from Ms. Quarian that they now have five vocational sites up and running, where we had none from back in March of 2020. And they've actually been to seven vocational sites. Between the Auburn Food Service and the work they do in the schools, they do some work here with distributing PPE to the schools, so when nurses need something, they put an order into the Encore class, they fill the order, they fill out the transportation sheet so it gets sent to the right person. But they've also been at Big Lots, Park &amp; Shop, and Town Pizza, and it's just been really exciting to watch not only this program grow, but the continued opportunities that are offered to our kids in the Evolve program as well. So I'll leave you, there's one more slide.
There is one, okay.
With a quote that I think really capitalizes just this brief little presentation, but learning is not the product of teaching, it's the product of the activity of learning. And I think this brief little view of this shows the many activities that our kids are participating in, despite the parameters, despite some of the limitations, despite everything we've been through, that learning is alive and well. I just couldn't be prouder of the teachers and the staff in our schools and what they've been able to do for our kids. So that's it for me tonight.
Well, that was an excellent presentation. That was, you know, that was the icing on the cake as we started to talk about the sense of normalcy and kind of feeling good about, you know, signing off on field trips and the student representative's report, that was all positive. And then that was just a great, great capstone for that, just kind of brings back memories of a couple of years ago, and we would have these feel-good presentations very often. And, no, it's very, very welcoming and great to see those kids enjoying themselves in all aspects, especially the, you know, even the band being able to finally get together, it's just, that's enormous. I mean, from where we were just a few months ago, so, you know, thank you for that. And I echo your statements regarding staff, what a phenomenal staff we have.
Awesome.
We've been saying it for years, but, I mean, I mean, this is an opportunity for us to really highlight how great our staff is. And, you know, there's never been, never been a lack of respect from this committee regarding staff or the leadership team, and that includes the leadership team. But no, more than ever, I just have the utmost respect and so thankful for what they do.
That's great.
Absolutely. And I think to learn by doing is one of the best ways to learn. I mean, you can read something, but to actually be able to do it with your hands, they'll remember that.
Yeah.
I hope that's just awesome that our staff is able to do that for the children.
Yep. And it's all creative thinking, finding the different way to do what we've done and the kids enjoy, and they've really gone out, out on a limb for all of it, so it's amazing.
Any other comments or questions?
No, just the same, I mean, I don't think you get better than this, and the creativity, I don't have a creative mind, but some of the stuff is
Right.
Just really neat to see, that I hear when my kids come home.
Well, that's because they're, you know, they're not shutting it down at 2 o'clock like, you know, many people might think. Their minds are always working on what they can do better for their students, so.
Yeah.
And again, that's why we appreciate them.
Yep.
And Cecilia, try not to overshadow that wonderful report with your business and financial piece, you know, how you like to turn on the fireworks and
As always, that's the thing, we're the top actors. Great pictures, it's just great to see students. Wonderful, so. I provided in your packet a uniting budget for the people 26, 21, as well as a valid transfer fee, the transfers with the same series, here in the nation, and the transfer between different series, you need people. And I think that we have to answer the question of the result.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Mrs. Dennis King, have you sort of structured the provided memo in your packet requesting that four food service equipment items may be obsolete? And our tabletop mixer, which is no longer operational, two open-air beverage foods which are quite old and not energy efficient, and one hot butter over to the temperature regulator does not function. So she is not planning to resume these pieces of material, pieces of equipment. We'll have to let the company pick up the items and dispose them for the district that will charge.
Great. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to deem their requested food service equipment items as obsolete so they may be disposed of.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Handfield, you couldn't use that flat grill tub here in back of the central office?
You know, I'll tell you, we did talk about it, but there's two things I'm not really good at, one is cooking and the other is anything that's home maintenance, so. I was, so my heart was breaking for poor Jasmine because I could just, I did that once and I didn't know how to shut the water off, and I was like 27 years old. It was just like a water fountain you'd see like outside of like the US Embassy or something like that. So, no, I, no, if I could plug it in and, no, nope, I was, no, nope.
All right, just giving you one last shot at it.
Thank you, though, I know my limitations, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Okay, and lastly, bus registrations continue to be collected and information has been shared with families via email from Dr. Heaton, while also being posted on the district website, and they also, with the March trimester, they, but they were sent home with families so that they did get a hard copy of backpacks. It's still early, but we encourage families to get their registrations in now to avoid any late fees. Registrations can be filled out for all students regardless if they pay or not. And any questions on transportation, you can put it up yourself or in the section by calling the office or in the other one of those. So we'll be happy if we have a lot of questions and we'll be happy to answer them.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Is there anything else, Dr. Handfield?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you, that is it for this evening.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.